Please take instruction from the staff and stewards. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend the permission, for example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Jay. Is there any apologies for absence?
There was an apology received from councillor Peter Gilbert, who was down as a reserve member.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to ask members to introduce themselves now, please, so my colleague on the right.
Morning, my name's Cliff Woodcraft, I'm elected member for Forward.
Councillor Mark Whitaker, councillor for Stockbridge and Dupperton, thank you.
Morning, Samantha Bond, legal advisor to the subcommittee.
Shimla Finch, licensing officer, and I'll be presenting the report today.
Jay Bell, Democratic Services Officer.
Okay, thank you. Just going to ask the solicitor's committee to outline the procedure for this morning. Oh, apologies. Getting ahead of myself, sorry. Could the applicants introduce themselves, please?
Good morning, my name is Masood Ibrahim, and I'm the owner of 418 Store.
Hi, everyone, my name is Said Masoodzbrava.
Hello, I'm Amanda Picard, Public Health Principal for Sheffield City Council, focused on wider determinants of health.
Hi, it's Brian Homshaw, councillor for Bromhill and Sheravell, which is the ward in question.
Morning, everyone, my name is Carlo, Botanyon Gate Community Association.
I'm Vivian Smith, also representing the local community association.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, now we'll ask the solicitor's committee to outline the procedure for this morning.
Thank you, Chair. Has everyone got a copy of the papers and can see them just? Yep, fab. So the procedure is right at the back of the report on page seventy-one. It looks a lot worse than it is, so we'll just try and run through it as briefly as possible. The licensing officer, who Shimla this morning will introduce the report. If there are any questions concerning the report, it could be raised then, so if there's anything missing or since changed in the application, we can get that updated for the record. We'll then turn to the representatives for the responsible authorities, so this morning we'll start with Public Health, who will be asked to detail their relevant representations. After Public Health, we'll probably just work down the bench, that way council, Homshaw, and then the Local Residents' Association as well, just to detail your relevant representation, so to expand on what's already been submitted in the report today. Members may have questions, and with the leave of the Chair, the applicants may also ask you guys some questions as well. Once we've done with that, we'll head over to the applicant for the variation to detail the variation application, provide clarification on it and respond to any representations made, both written in the report and orally at the hearing today. Similarly, members can ask you questions, and with the leave of the Chair, everyone on that side may have the opportunity to ask you questions as well. You'll be given the opportunity to sum up your application, just to leave us with any final thoughts, before we take the options from Shimla as detailed in the report. Members will then go into private session to take legal advice and consider the application, so you are all welcome to wait around for that, and we can give you the decision a little bit later on, this morning, this afternoon, depending how we do. The decision of the Licensing Committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act two thousand and three and regulations made there under. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice, so we can do that in open session, as we are now, or in private, where we'll just ask you guys, just turn it back into the anteroom, we'll have a discussion and then invite you back in and feedback what's been discussed and decided. So hopefully that should be everything. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you for that, Sam. Right, over to the licensing officer to introduce the report then, please, Shimla.
Thank you, Chair. This report is to consider an application for the variation of an existing premises licence under the Licensing Act. The application was received on the fifth of August, and a full copy of the documents are attached at Appendix A of this report. The application proposes to extend the current operating hours for the off-sales of alcohol from nine AM to three AM, Sunday to Thursday, and nine AM to five AM, Fridays and Saturdays. Current hours are permitted to eleven PM every day, and a copy of the current premises licence is attached at Appendix B. This application has been referred to the Licensing Subcommittee for Determination due to unresolved representations from Public Health Team, two councillors and eight local residents. And copies of these representations are attached at Appendix C, and all parties have been invited to attend this meeting. There's also been further comments from South Yorkshire Police, where conditions have been agreed in relation to maintaining incident logs, staff training and CCTV in the premises. So full details can be found at Appendix D. Members are to note, licence holders have previously applied for a change in their operating hours in October twenty twenty-three and was refused, and the decision notice is attached at Appendix C, just for information. There's no specific financial implications arising from this application, however, additional costs may be incurred should the matter go to appeal. The legal position in carrying out our functions is set out in paragraph six of the report, and it's recommended that members carefully consider the representations made and take steps as the Subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is everyone okay with that? Any questions for anyone? Okay, thank you. Right, now we're going to go to the responsible authority, in this case the Public Health, and if you can make your presentation then, please.
Hello, thank you. So I'm here from a public health perspective. Our role in the council is to prevent negative impact on health, wellbeing and reduce demand and impact on local health services. Whilst public health and health is not necessarily a licensing objective, my objection was based upon the rates of antisocial behaviour and sexual violence in the particular area surrounding the premises. And I think I detailed in my written representation that within around two hundred metres of the shop, there's been, in the last twelve months, there was around forty-three sexual assaults and violence in that area, and also sixteen cases of antisocial behaviour reported to the police. While alcohol does not necessarily cause sexual violence, alcohol and intoxication is present in around fifty per cent of all sexual assaults that happen. So intoxication and increased alcohol consumption, while it doesn't cause, it greatly facilitates sexual violence by lowering inhibitions, impairing judgement and makes victims more vulnerable. So in our view, an extension to alcohol licensing hours could only heighten those risks even further and raise risk of sexual violence in that night-time setting. The UK Police data demonstrates that the majority of rape and serious sexual assaults tend to happen between the hours of two and four AM, and that was our base reasoning for objecting to this extension. I recognise that there are already some late licences in the area, namely Seven Hills, I think, are licensed till two AM. But from our point of view, adding more will certainly not improve the situation and will only serve to compound and worsen that particular situation. Going back again to our role in public health is partly to reduce demand and impact on health services as well as look after people's health and wellbeing. The impact of sexual assault and antisocial behaviour on an individual is significant in that person's life, and also brings impacts from a local economy and productivity point of view if people are suffering damage to their health and wellbeing. Also recently, we've had a national four per cent increase in A&E attendances versus the previous year. That was in twenty twenty-four. And nationally, we've seen a twenty-two per cent rise in A&E attendances since twenty-twelve. So again, looking at impact on local health services, our role is to try and prevent additions to that health services demand. So yes, so to summarise again, although health is not a licensing objective, it was the rates of antisocial behaviour and sexual violence that we were particularly interested in this particular case. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We may have some questions, I'm just going to open up some questions.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you very much, very detailed report. Just on the subject of other premises that have got licences into the early hours, how far away are they from this particular one? I mean, are we looking the whole length of Ecclesall Road or?
I can picture in my mind where Seven Hills is. You'll probably have a better idea, I guess, of how far Seven Hills is down the road.
Right opposite Mark and Spencer.
Yeah, yeah. Whereas I think your site is next door but one to the Sainsbury's, isn't it, on Ecclesall Road? I can't put that into a figure.
The roundabout on Ecclesall Road, just before you get to the roundabout. So Seven Seas, it's in the beginning of Ecclesall Road. The 418 Store towards the end of Ecclesall Road, in two different locations, I would say.
If I had to put a figure on it, I would say probably about four hundred, three hundred metres?
Yeah.
So are we talking about more or less the full length of Ecclesall Road between Hunter's Bar and the city centre? This is a problem.
In terms of the ASB and sexual violence, I looked at the two hundred metre perimeter around this particular site that we're interested in. So yeah, so that wouldn't quite reach up to where the Seven Hills site is.
But the sexual violence and ASB, have there actually been any within two hundred metres of this particular premises?
Yes, yes, so forty-three sexual assaults or violence and sixteen counts of ASB in twelve months within two hundred metres of radius of this site.
Thank you, yeah, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, councillor Whitaker.
Could I just ask how this sexual violence compares with other busy areas, you know, like outside the corporation and places like that? Is it, how does it compare? Has it got worse in recent times?
I'm not sure around recent times. I was looking at month-by-month data and looked up to the previous twelve months. I'd need to do more detailed analysis to look at what the trend is over time around that area. In terms of, it was a hotspot when you looked at the area around, sort of, for that particular neighbourhood centre, it was a hotspot around that particular two hundred metres, around that particular area. The city centre has higher rates. And then there was another increase going up towards the Broome Hill area. So it often tends to be in those neighbourhood centres. I don't have the figures to hand, but I could prepare that if people would like to see that.
Okay, I will come back to you and allow you to ask any questions of all of the parties at this stage. Okay, so there's no further questions, then we move on to councillor Homshaw.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank Public Health representative and the residents who have come along out of their own time to make comment today. A dozen residents, some in family homes opposite 418 Stores, have been in touch with me to say they do not want this area to become more of a late-night destination. They include committee members of prominent local friends groups and organisations worried about the impact of people congregating next to residents' homes and the noise effect. They do not want this noise and disruption. Supplying late-night refreshment and alcohol till five AM will only encourage this. I'd like to ask this as application is refused, and the applicant removes these unsafe hours for sales back to ones that fit the local area, hours that respect local people in this residential area and will not cause antisocial behaviour to increase. Overnight late refreshment and alcohol sales jeopardises the concerted work done by local agencies in the city to mitigate the effects of aggressive and intimidating behaviour by people under the influence of alcohol. We do not want to be a new city centre, which in spots has attendant issues of antisocial behaviour and street drunkenness. It's well known that the availability of alcohol for long hours every day is going to do damage to the overall health of individuals. It also damages local communities and the crime and bad behaviour increase. We have to think of the harms and the precedent set here. The Cathedral Archer Project has said on record that overnight alcohol fuels antisocial behaviour, and it leads to higher crime levels. We are particularly worried about late-night and early-hours drinking, both of which lead to vulnerable people becoming tank-top and unable to cope for the rest of the day. They're the ones that cause the police, residents and local shopkeepers the most difficulty. None of us would like to see Ecclesall Road become a destination for late-night and early-hours drinking. The police and alcohol services would simply not be able to cope. I'd like to point out that the City Centre Public Service Protection Order, the PSPO, came out on the first of April, and that street drinkers have had to find other locations out of the city centre in other areas of our city, spreading the resources of drink, drug services and the police even more thinly. We have had an informal curfew at eleven PM in the area for many years now, and I ask the committee to note the previous refused application for 418 Stores in twenty twenty-three. The council needs to strike a balance between business needs and the needs of local residents in surrounding streets regarding reasonable living conditions. It is only by policing properly the licensing conditions on Ecclesall Road, those four critical licensing objectives that we hold so dear, that we will stop it deteriorating for residents and damaging the businesses of the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, councillor Whitaker? Councillor Wood?
No, no, yeah.
Okay, thank you, no questions for that presentation. Thank you, councillor Homshaw. So we move swiftly on to our other interested parties.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Carlo, I'm one of the local residents, and I was here also two years ago when the applicants wanted to have to open their shop twenty-four hours. So this is for me the second time. Can I just say that I was really shocked about the sexual violence basically next to my house, that you have, I mean, I'm under shock. I'm sorry, I just did not know what's happening next to where we live, and I'm appalled. Obviously, it's nothing to do with their shop, of course, but, you know, I've got young children and, if you don't mind, I'm, yeah. I'm appalled, and I don't know what to say, I'm a bit groggy at the moment after what I've heard, because we have meetings, regular meetings with our local four roads, and no one has ever mentioned this. Now we need to inform them that we live in a, I don't want to say very dangerous area, but in an area where we need to have a look and open our eyes, yeah? So, sorry about this little things in bracket. So what we want in our friends' residence, we just want to have peaceful nights. We want to sleep, and we don't want to have any antisocial behaviour. We have already antisocial behaviour with the students, we manage with the help of the university and councillor Brian to mitigate all these things. What I would like to tell this group is that SPAR, which is located not too far from their shop, has actually decided not to open during the evening because of the abuse their staff are having, because the attack, because the drunkenness and the violence. So a shop next to their shop has decided to close at eleven o'clock while they have the ability and the formal historically, they were historically open in twenty-four hours. So there is actually a potential danger for shop owners, which is crazy if you think about it, yeah? They got the right to, every shop has got the right to open and be safe, and the staff have been safe. But SPAR, a bigger organisation than them, felt that they had to close their shop by eleven or midnight, according exactly to eleven. So we also noticed that nowadays there are more delivery people, delivery wood, I don't know exactly the brand because I don't use them. And we are also a bit concerned about people meeting there and then distributing alcohols to young residents and therefore making our lives as residents painful. So we got nothing against people wanting to do their business, but they got to have a right balance between the business and us, local people. So when we were young, if we were waking up during the night, two seconds, we'd go back to bed. Now it's impossible, it's impossible. And I don't see why our life and the life of my fellow residents should be, let's say, upset or disturbed during the evening. So as far as I'm concerned, for the second time, I would like the council, the group, to refuse this application. Thank you very much.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, for me.
Any questions?
No, 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 thank you, I think it's very clear.
Councillor Whitaker?
Could I just say, I think that's a very good point. The spread of city centre all-night cruising seems to me logical for it to be reserved inside the Ring Road, because, as you say, residents of all sorts live outside the Ring Road, whereas the people who live in the city centre tend to be younger people anyway, you know? So I think you make a very good point about, you know, being woken up in the middle of the night and things like that. Just like to say that, thank you.
Sam, any questions?
Thank you. Are you experiencing any problems currently that you could sort of attribute to the store? I think you've been operating a couple of years now, just if you noticed any problems with them specifically or in that area?
Can I say, probably not, because they're only allowed to open till eleven o'clock. So most of the other places on Ecclesall Road only open till eleven o'clock. As we say, the SPAR has a twenty-four-hour licence, which is historic, forty, fifty years. They don't use it. And there is a restaurant a couple of doors away, sorry, it's not a restaurant. When it was a restaurant, for some reason, it had a licence till one thirty. It is now a bar, but the licence hasn't changed. So we can't do anything about that.
Thank you, I was going to sort of lead into that a little bit. So after eleven PM in that area, is there anything else either open or any issues after that time, or does it all quieten down a little bit?
I think councillor Brian said that there is an informal curfew and by eleven o'clock nowadays, roughly, everybody closes their door.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, that's all the, end of the presentations and any questions? Apologies, I did ask if there was anything else, sorry.
Hello, I was here at the last hearing as well, and I was wanting to say nothing has changed, but clearly it has from the public health report and maybe from our experience, but also the shop has changed. When it was first opened, it had a wonderful display of fresh fruit and things outside, which isn't there anymore. Because one of the things, the points they made then was they were going to be quite an open shop selling fresh fruit and all sorts of things, it doesn't seem to be happening anymore. So the shop has changed, the shop has changed. The area has had the issues that we've obviously seen. Our area has actually increased in the number of residents and reduced the number of students. So there is going to be a change over the next few years concerning Ecclesall Road and young people as maybe Collegiate Crescent is closing. So therefore the area is changing as well, and therefore there probably is less need for any extended licence as we get more and more residents and less and less young people. So that's all I've actually wanted to add at the moment, because that is noticeable since the fourth of August. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No.
Right, okay, so that now is the end of the presentations and questions. Mr Ibrahim, before I come and ask you to make your presentation, now I'm going to give you the opportunity to ask any questions of the presentations made. At this stage, I will give you a full opportunity to make your presentation, but if you have any questions of anybody, then you're welcome to ask the question.
We don't have no questions. I think some of the answers that I wanted, they said it themselves, so I don't really have no questions.
That's fine, you don't have to ask any questions. Okay, well, in that case, I'm coming over to yourself to make your presentation and just, you know, expand on your application.
So we came here in two thousand and twenty-three, that was when we first initially applied for the whole licence. We have wanted the extra hours, the licence that we applied for, it was around three o'clock, I believe, and then we have to reduce those hours because we got the place, the lease was signed, and we didn't have a good backup money behind us to support us, to keep the doors closed until we get the licence sorted. So we had to agree to an eleven o'clock licence and then open up and build some sort of reputation, which we have. We had a couple of other places on Ecclesall Road as well, which I manage, he manages, but we are always out on this road. So she mentioned that Ecclesall Road is changing. Yes, same as this country is changing, same as me changing, you guys changed to last year as well. But we are here for a better change. We have tried to put the fruit, fresh fruit, display outside, it cost us a couple of thousand pounds, but that was the initial investment. We wanted to make some more money to pay all the bills, to pay the staff, electricity, gas rent, all of that. So we have invested some money to have a display full of fruit, but the community didn't support. They didn't buy anything, and you can't keep fresh fruit in stock for ages, they go mouldy. So that was what we have tried, and it didn't work for us. In regards to anti-behaviour, thing that people are noisy, they are not good for the neighbourhood, that's out of our box. We are not there to greet or to get drunk people coming in our business and make a scene out of it. Our reputation allowed us to trade in the last four years with a very good reputation, and we are a proud businessman, and we have done really well. Well, it was a work hard for us, it was super hard for us to trade until now, but having those extra hours would just put us in a better position to survive in Sheffield, because right now businesses are going away from Sheffield. Sheffield City Council don't support the businesses, but the only, they think they do, they push businesses away from Sheffield, and it's not They push businesses away from Sheffield and it's not what I think. It's all of the businesses aren't not happy because of this amount of support we get from the neighbourhood uh and from the Sheffield City Council. He mentioned that um some two hundred yards from our premises, uh some some stuff happened which he hasn't got a clue what was going on. But I think it was an Albanian family, was it Albanian?
It was a Romanian family last year where everyone was unhappy with them. And I'm surely you guys know about it as well, but they've got kicked out of the area for that reason.
We've not seen them though.
And I'm sure if there's a shop is open at that that time after twelve o'clock, people feel more safer. You know, there's lights on the streets, there's somewhere where they can go wait if it's rainy outside the shop. That the off licence, what we have there, so many people respect us in that area. The businesses behind the Sharrow Well Road, they all know us. There's not been one report of any fights, any problems outside the store. We clean up the store, sorry, not the store, outside the shop every single day, without a doubt. But these people only pick on on smallest things, you know, that's not related to us. There's a high demand for me to stay open as I'm good with everyone and I work every day myself, especially the night shifts.
So we are always there, we are always on Ecclesall Road and where we located, lounge four one eight, uh next to Petunical Garden. I would say just like you guys walk through Ecclesall Road and see what's going on in the neighbourhood, because I live in that neighbourhood. I am there from eight, nine o'clock in the morning till twelve, one o'clock at midnight. I don't see no social behaviour, or even though if I see, it's my neighbourhood, I will stay there and I'll make sure they walk out. Walk from the area safe and not screaming and shouting and make a scene out of it. I, it happens before actually, and I managed to stop the fight or whatever it was because we have got a good reputation, people do respect us and they know our faces on Ecclesall Road or in town. So when there is something going on, if we step in, they're just gonna go away. They're not gonna like uh raise everything else and make a scene out of it. Um but I'm sure you guys are know about this as well, but if we get the licence that we ask for, we will make sure there is nothing going on in the area, that we are like there. No anti behaviour so uh social, we don't allow drunk people to come in and buy alcohol and get more drunk. And then obviously they don't know what's going on and they do whatever they wanna do, we will stop selling to those people. But we're not there, we don't want the licence to just sell the alcohol, it's a whole supermarket, it's all whole off licence. There there is a lot of other things that we offer, you're just picking up on one thing and you're using that against our case. Alcohol is not just the things that we sell, it's a lot of, it's it's all other stuff. And um yeah, any question if you guys have, and we we here to answer those questions.
Just to say, not everyone finishes work at five o'clock in the daytime. People finish at twelve, one o'clock, the bar workers, restaurant workers. The um when they advertised this shop that wanted to extend the hours on Facebook, the Sheffield Star. There's so much comments of support on there, people saying not everyone finishes work so early. They finish after five, uh sorry, twelve, one o'clock. There's a lot of supportive comments on there, but it's just from certain people in this.
And they're all positive comments as well, it's all their life. Um the people from different locations, from the area, uh they have made a comment and they want an off licence. We listen to people's needs. Uh we want uh our neighbourhood to be safe and it has been safe. It is better than before, it's cleaner. We have, we have got three different locations on Ecclesall Road. If you go around our shops, you you see how clean is the environment. If we see something that is not good for the neighbourhood, we will do something about it, we just don't walk past it. We will make sure everything's done properly and we have done this in the last three three years. We are very passionate about what we do and we make sure we do it right.
Okay, uh thank you for that, Mr. Remi. Um we may have some questions then. Can you just tell me, you said that you obviously, it's a general store, I presume, so you you sell other merchandise other than alcohol. So what kind of other other merchandise do you do you sell in that shop?
We have two fresh machine, uh juice machines inside the store. We sell snacks, just daily essentials, soft drinks, you know, households. Of course, other than the cigars and the alcohol as well, we sell a lot of things. Chocolate, slush, everything, above everything, daily essentials.
But we have, we have tried on the fruit section, it actually looked amazing outside the place as well. It cost us a lot of money, but we were losing. And obviously, once you invest something, you want to get something out of it. And that, it was just an extra cost for us as well. And we have taken the 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 unit that we built for the fruit uh to my dad's shop, so he's using that. But we have tried.
Thank you. Consulter Croft?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um yes, so ha- have you considered applying for an opening licence without alcohol to those hours?
My, our problem is not that we're gonna serve people that's already drunk. With, as as it is now, we already don't, we don't serve people that's over drunk. There's a, there's a lady in the in the area, she knows me very well, but she has like five, six months that she falls into a deep situation with herself. And every time she comes, I always ask her, how are you? I only give her one bottle of wine in a day if that's if she's drinking again. I'm very known to this area about my goods to everyone. But I'm applying for later hours so I can get my name out there, brand out there and just sell everything, you know. It's not just the alcohol, but I do want the alcohol licence again.
But it's it's business point of view. If we sell, let's say, from twelve o'clock till five A M. If we sell uh like thirty different uh items of the things in the shop, let's say bowl of water, couple of uh pint of beers, some chocolate. The profit margin, the cost of those are not a lot. So even though if we sell like fifty different items, it's gonna be like a hundred pounds, hundred fifty pounds. If we sell two bottle, they're not gonna go uh and drink those on the street, by the way, because it's a premium place, there is bottles that you can get two hundred, three hundred, five hundred pounds each. So those people, they know the location, they will drive, they will get the alcohol or they get a taxi. They will get get the whatever they need and they leave the area, they go home, they party there. But this is um this is the thing, we will make more money if we sell everything that we have in the place. But if I sell uh just the ordinary stuff, there is there is not a good profit. So I can't keep the doors open because there is not enough profit to pay me, my staff, electricity, gas rates, all of that. So we have to be open to sell the alcohol, the cigars, but as he said, as he mentioned, people know us in the area and we know the people in the area and we want the good reputation. And we don't wanna risk that, we don't wanna change that to anything else, we want the neighbourhood to be happy. So if we do get the licence, I would say uh monitor it for a year and see how how good we are. Or if there is any issues, if there is any problems in the area, then review the application, suspend the application if you need to.
Thank you. So are 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 you saying that people, when they come to buy alcohol, won't be drinking it on the streets, but will be taking it home to drink? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, hundred percent, I say that, because I I don't, I've probably seen few people on the street that drinks. But they, I don't consider them as customers, they they live on the street. But there is people that they get in touch on social media and say, are you open? Yes, we are open. At what time is that? It's ten thirty. And they come in, they get a couple of bottles, they get a couple of cigars, they get a couple of soft drinks and some nibbles on this, on the way out. They sit in the car, they drive home, they do whatever they wanna do. And they're gonna message message us saying thank you so much for the quality whiskey or whatever it was. Uh but no, hundred percent, no, we're not targeting those people on the street, we are talking top end people that are um they've been working and they 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 just want to celebrate their nights with uh with whoever they love.
Thank you. So if um say I was a younger person, had a good night out in 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 the town uh and and I and I came to buy alcohol um at 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 your premises. Um and I could hold my liquor fairly well, um I'd be able to get some liquor, is that right? And um and and then go out and drink it on the street? I mean, how 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 could you police that?
As long as you look fine to me, you will get served. You know when it's, when someone is so drunk and when he's.
We talk to people.
We talk to people. But also, you're getting your drink, you're walking out, you go wherever you want to go. You don't stand in front of the shop drinking, you don't cause any problems in around the shop drinking. You go wherever you want to go, it's up to you where you want to drink. But you're not drinking in front of our premises.
I even experienced this in lounge four one eight as well, I had a drunk person coming in. Um but obviously I noticed he's drunk, uh I've got my alcohol licence and I've got everything on my own name, so I know how it works. Uh the person came in, he was drunk, uh I and he wanted alcohol, I didn't serve him no alcohol. But instead, I gave him a bowl of water, some ice and a lemon in in there. I was like, drink that, that's what you need, you don't need no alcohol. I sat him down, I didn't even charge him for the water, because he looked, he he looked nice. Uh he had a suit on, but I don't know if he was celebrating or if he was upset. Uh I gave him a bowl of water instead of alcohol, because if I give him alcohol, he will be on the street. And we don't wanna see that on Ecclesall Road, in the very prime location, we wanna see good people with good heart there.
Okay, thank you very much for that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Consulter again?
Um of course, there are quite a lot of supermarkets that are open twenty four hours a day and selling alcohol. Marks and Spencer's isn't one of those, but presumably in the daytime you're in competition with them uh for selling alcohol. I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head when they shut. Is it something like nine o'clock in the evening or something?
Most supermarkets on that street is nine to eleven.
Nine till eleven, right.
Only Seven Seas.
Seven Hills.
Seven Hills got the licence till two o'clock and the Spa.
Well, the Spa, I think, closes about ten, eleven, but there's one stop, that's open till two, three o'clock again. But I want to extend these hours for the demand, you know. I have lots of customers and I said on the Facebook post, there's people saying you should open, that's one of the main reasons. Uh everyone knows us in the area.
Right. So so you've got, you've got quite a lot of alcohol competition from them generally up to their opening hours. I mean, but I mean, I would, at three o'clock in the morning, do you sell enough alcohol to cover the staffing costs? Would you? I mean, I know you don't at the moment, but would you?
With the highest demand, with our name four one eight store, I think we should.
You should, yeah.
Well, and it's it's not so much about the money here, you know. We've not had any problems for almost two and a half years in that store. Nothing with alcohol licensing, you know, police problems, anything.
We helping, we be helping the neighbourhood and the area.
I can see that, I mean, as as my colleague said, you know, I was, I was once a young man as well and there has been odd occasions when I've been walking back from town at three o'clock in the morning and if somewhere was open, I would quite welcome buying a bar of chocolate or something like that. Um but I can't see there the footfall at three o'clock in the morning really justifying it really. Uh I can't quite get, I can't quite see see it myself. But you think there would be sufficient footfall to be making a profit at being open at three o'clock in the morning?
We want, we want to try this. We want, we initially wanted uh the late licence. But obviously, we drew from that licence ourselves because we wanted to get the licence with no hassles. Or many objections, open the door. But now we are in the business, as I said, we got rid of the fruit section because we tried it, it didn't work. So now I want to sleep at eleven o'clock or twelve o'clock, I don't wanna sit on um on behind the counter and save customers. But we have to, we look at the demand, we listen to people and we are there ourselves as well. So we can control, uh if we see a drunk person serve the alcohol to that person or no. Uh save, we can't save, you have a good night. Um but again, it's the reputation that we had, we have listened to people and we've been asked. We we need to keep the doors a little bit longer open and we have, we got the demand for it.
Can I just say, I've opened the off licence in West Street as well, so when I finish at two o'clock or let's say on a weekend, four, five o'clock, there's a lot of people walking by, whether from a nightclub or whatever. People walk by, they want food, they want snacks, there's no takeaways around. I'm probably fifteen minutes walk by Seven Hills and want drink stop, so I'm more up the road towards the roundabout. But there's a lot of people walking by and if they see it online that says it's closed so late, for sure they walk on down, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So?
Thank you. Uh you might have briefly touched on it, but what's your your target audience, who are you looking to aim this this offering at?
Everyone.
Everyone.
Everyone that surrounds me, you know, the students for the snacks. There's a lot of students that don't sleep till early in the mornings. But I'm not targeting alcohol after that such a time, you know, I'm building a reputation, I'm building a brand and getting the name out there. It's not just on any ordinary off licence. It's four one eight store, we sell Cuban cigars. And whoever walks in that shop, they'll be like, wow.
It's a premium shop in a premium location, so we want that premium label on Ecclesall Road and also on the top of our businesses. We don't want uh people outside of Ecclesall Road to think, oh, this road, it's it's messy, it's dirty, it's loud. We want that good reputation because it's helping the neighbourhood. And obviously, once the neighbourhood is happy, us will be happy too. Because we are in a prime location, so we need to keep this going forward.
I suppose as well with your location, would there be an option sort of for shift workers or or office workers coming into town? Is that sort of something you're looking to capture with the earlier hours as well, or is it just purely people that would be on the way home?
No, there's a lot of people that finish late from a club or from a bar down the road that walk by.
And they can't do that Monday to Friday because they're working um five days a week. Uh the only time they can enjoy their time, it's um either Saturday, Sunday or Friday, it's it's the weekend. And that's when uh they they come and visit us.
I think you said that some people have been asking you for later hours as well, sort of they've come into the shop, sort of saying, I wish you were open a bit later or.
Yeah, that's a lot, everyone. Since they posted us on Sheffield Star, everyone's been so happy and supportive.
And I think it's only a Sheffield thing that that um you put, you want to open a business, you want to have a licence. You just get objections from everywhere and objections are here to make us better, hundred percent. But there is businesses in Manchester, Birmingham and Leeds, they're just like, it's always, their cities are busy, loud, it's good, you know. That's why people from Sheffield, they go to Manchester for a night out. They go to Leeds for a night out. Why this money can't stay in Sheffield? And people in Sheffield enjoy a night out in Sheffield, because there's not enough places. There is, there is nowhere open at after eleven o'clock. There is only small percentage of co- clubs, bars and places in Sheffield open, trade after eleven. Only a few, but you go to Manchester, Leeds, uh you feel like you're in a different country.
Thank you. What sort of percentage of the business would you say alcohol sales make up?
Percentage, I'll probably say thirty percent, twenty-five to thirty percent.
Would the business be viable without alcohol sales, would you say?
On Ecsel Road with the rent you're paying and the business rates, for sure.
So it, you could operate without an alcohol licence?
Oh, no, sorry, I'm saying I can't.
I thought that's what you meant, yeah, just checking. Okay. And if you experience any issues, sort of any crime, antisocial behaviour, sort of either directly outside or people coming into your shop or other businesses that are reporting it to you?
Nothing at all.
Tell them about the story that you had. Uh, the lady came to lounge when someone hit the head.
There was a, the, the story, you know, they know me as a, like, I help everyone. So there was a drunk girl in the daytime, she fell and she smashed her head in front of the shop. But she didn't come to my shop before, but I was outside, I helped her. She, she was bleeding really bad. There's video footage on CCTV as well, which I still have. So I helped her for an hour and she, she covered me in the blood, you know, everything. The crazy part was, I didn't get a thank you at the end. But she came, but she came back and the mother came back after to lounge and I reminded her about the situation. She's seen the footage, which, like, it shows who her true friends were.
And she came and she spoke to myself, the mother, and she goes, thank you guys so much, um, for helping her, because it was literally blood everywhere. Destroyed his, uh, t-shirt as well with blood. But, yeah, again, we helped someone. We didn't just stand there and look at the face. Not, uh, in, uh, our culture, we help.
Can I just say, to peo- there's a, a lot of homeless people around that area as well. My rule with them is, don't come to my shop. But if you do want to drink or if you want a chocolate, you're more than welcome to get it from the reduced section, free of charge.
He wasn't saying alcohol.
No, I'm saying reduce, reduced section, they, they can always have anything they want, just as long as they don't come to my store. They can come in when I'm there, but in the daytime they can't.
You had any complaints about your operation over the last couple of years, any residents or the businesses, anyone from the council?
No problems at all.
I had a couple of good feedbacks, actually. You've probably seen, uh, who came here to object my licence for lounge four one eight and four one eight eats. They all my regular customers and, uh, one of them, um, I can't remember his name, he tapped on my shoulder, he goes to me, well done, you did a really good business here, thank you.
You, are you both personal licence holders?
Uh, yes.
I'm not.
Uh, I am.
Would you be happy to work with and engage with local residents and councils if there were to be any issues to, you know, keep that open line of communication?
Hundred percent.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, uh, thank you. That's the end of the questions from this side. I am going to open to any questions from any of the interested parties, um, starting with public health. Any question, please?
Uh, can it be a statement as opposed to a question? Um, I, I'd just like to, to, to bring us back to the statistics around, um, the levels of antisocial behaviour and sexual violence that are, that are already present. You're clearly people who just want to run a business and run a successful business. And, and I don't think any of the comments here are, are personal or about, um, you know, clearly you're good people yourself. But, um, I don't think we can put onto individual shopkeepers the responsibility of being able to assess and, um, monitor impact of alcohol in the community. I think there's an assumption that, um, just, it probably wasn't intentional, but listening to the conversation today, there's an assumption that sexual violence only seems to take place by people who drink cheaper alcohol or, um, people of a very particular demographic. Sexual violence happens in the home, on the street and is committed by people of all sorts of different demographics, ages, um, and backgrounds. So, um, I would just wanted to bring the focus back to the statement that I made at the start and, and around alcohol. Um, raises the risk, well, uh, greater availability of alcohol, particularly at particular hours of the morning, raises the, uh, risk level of, um, uh, impacting those statistics.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Councilor Homshoe, any questions?
Good notion, I find, how. Okay, um, yeah, so I've got one question, which is to do with, uh, other licences. So you were saying that you, you have other licences, uh, in the city, including one on West Street. Um, but also two more on Ecsel Road, I understand. Uh, so have there been any licensing concerns of these? Have the police been in touch about anything? Has there been any parking enforcement issues, uh, nearby to it? You know, anything that might impact on this, uh, application?
What do you mean by for enforcement issues?
So, um, if there's been parking nearby for, from people.
There's a, there's a problem on Thompson Road, there's a gentleman and there's a woman who's got problems with us. We park our car when we're unloading it on a double yellow line. That's about it. We get fines, we deal with the consequences. But there's just certain two people that have a problem with us on Thompson Road regarding of how busy the place is.
Uh, sometimes we, we both, uh, like, it's, it's a big place, we do buy a lot of stuff. And every time we come into Thompson Road, there is absolutely nowhere to park. So just when you turn into Thompson Road, literally on the le- uh, on the right, there is a double yellow line, which I park my car there and he parks his car there. We put the boot on and there is tons of it stuck in the boot that we just take out. We take it out and we move the car, we shift elsewhere. And that's the only thing, uh, that we had.
So over and above that, there are no issues with people parking nearby and using the premise, I, any of your premises?
No, uh, uh, no, as far as I'm concerned.
There's a, there's a few more really busy cafes just next door to us as well, so it's not always us. Cafica, there's a new matcha place, which is viral.
Mate, it's, uh, they are very busy and that's good that they are busy. But there is a lot of people coming into area to get the matcha. It's, it's all over social media, it's got thousands, millions of views. Uh, but yeah, I do sell matches as well, so.
Calm down.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the, the parties?
Uh, yes, please. Um, a few things. I think that, uh, they've just outlined the issues with it, we are fearing. People coming from the centre after having, uh, uh, out, three, it's not three fi- uh, AM, it's also five AM, they're applying. And these people coming from, uh, discotheques, bars, they're already drunk. They are not sober, I can assure you. At three AM, they go, they haven't got a tie. They enjoy their night and we would like them to go to bed and not to stop for another drink and wake us up. So this is the first thing that they just said. I need to stress the three AM, it's not three AM, it's also five AM, which is almost in the morning. I mean, nobody sober walks at four AM unless they've got a dog or, or other issue. So clear, clearly there is, there is a potential, uh, danger for our, for the, for antisocial behaviour.
Sorry, it's just questions.
Just questions.
Oh, so, oh, oh, sorry, que- oh, I beg, I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon. Um, so they just want questions, questions?
Well, have you got a question?
Yes, I just don't understand why we're mentioning, uh, also there are the shops. Lounge, which got other issues like, uh, table on, on the pavement, double yellow parking all the time, I can assure you, all the time. So I don't understand why we're talking about other shops. Us, we are concentrating on.
So you're there at three o'clock in the morning to see how drunk are people? And you're there twenty-four seven to see if I park my car on double yellow or not? You're everywhere, aren't you?
Can we just say, we get fines for parking our car anywhere, we, we deal with the consequences. And also not everyone's drunk at two, three, five o'clock in the morning. People, again, finish from town, they walk home. They don't want to pay the taxi, they walk home.
Sorry, I mean, we, we can't actually take parking matters into account in the committee anyway, so.
They're mentioning it.
Yeah, no, and, I mean, you've both, we've all done it.
We just honestly say if there is anything, he asked us a question and the only thing that came on my mind, it was just that parking on double yellow.
Yeah.
Which it was no other spot on Thompson Road for me to park my car. And there is like around hundred fifty small items or big items in my car.
I think the point is though, it's not particularly relevant to this premises and the variation. If the sort of questions from Council Homshoe in terms of complaints against other premises would be relevant, because it goes to sort of your experience and your competence in running a licensed premises, so that would be relevant. But in terms of the parking issues, it's not something that, that, that members can take into account. But in terms of your experience operating with the licensed premises, that is relevant.
Okay, carry on. Any other questions from interested parties?
Um, I'm very interested that you, uh, want to extend your licence after eleven o'clock. I wonder what data or evidence you've got that's more than just hearsay, that makes you think people want to buy alcohol, high-end alcohol, between eleven and three in the morning on a Monday?
You might get that one odd person that comes, spends two, three hundred pounds on a champagne bottle. But you never know, you know, it's, there's a lot of people who has money and there's also a lot of miserable people who don't have money. And they don't want to have a good time, you know?
My concern is when I walked down Ecsel Road at ten o'clock after a meeting at church, um, virtually every outlet, including Nonna's, is shut.
It's because you guys object to every licence.
We did not object, oh, Nonna's been shut at ten o'clock. Sorry, so I'm, I'm curious what evidence there is that on a Monday night, there is any requirement for this extension of the licence, particularly Mondays and Tuesdays, when Ecsel Road is close on dead.
It's a student area.
It's a busy environment. I'm not here to give you evidence that if I open and trade till five o'clock, I'm gonna make this or I'm gonna have issues or I'm not gonna have issues. We don't know. If I'm outside this box and I'm, I'm looking what is inside the box, I can't see what is inside the box. Until I try it, I wouldn't know. So I'm asking for a year licence and if everything was good, I'd keep my licence. If I had any sort of issues or problems, take the licence off me and I go to Manchester, which every business do. Sheffield are not supporting the businesses. That's why Ecsel Road is closed at ten o'clock or eleven o'clock. Do you think I don't want to mind a lounge bar to be open till three o'clock AM? Yes, I would love that. But you, you guys don't allow it.
Okay, um.
Let me ask another question.
One, yeah, okay.
Um, it's, I was very impressed that you like to make sure the front of your shop is clear and nobody's drinking outside your shop. But that means you have no control of where anybody else is drinking. So would you like to come and monitor all the streets around as well, if you're selling alcohol that nobody else is selling?
Um, that's the police job, the securities outside the shops and the government, uh, I pay the government, I don't work for the government.
We don't serve people that we know they're gonna cause problems outside on the main road. And that's what I've been doing for the past two years.
I would say, well, just walk through Ecsel Road, uh, uh, in daily basis at night. But do actually walk through Ecsel Road and see what's going on around your neighbourhood. Because I don't think, um, you really know and you walk around the neighbourhood, but I live on that neighbourhood, I am there twenty-four seven.
Okay, any other questions?
Can I also just mention that, uh, Leeds does have five cumulative impact policy areas in their city, which were introduced due to problems with alcohol and social behaviour. Um, Manchester has, uh, district, uh, impact zones, slightly different to cumulative impact, but again, introduced because of alcohol-related problems. Doncaster also has cumulative impact policy. So I just wanted to make a correction on, uh, on, on whether Sheffield is particularly different in that regard. We don't currently have cumulative impact policy.
It's not only me saying it, it's like all. One team, that, that team, it works on behalf of businesses to support them, to find out what their actual needs are. If there is anything they can do to help the businesses, don't, don't push the businesses away from Sheffield. Because we work for the government, for Sheffield City Council. The rates of the businesses are crazy. So the rates, it will pay, like, I paid my rates to Sheffield City Council. What do I get from Sheffield City Council? It's not much there, is there?
Okay, um, thank you. We'll stop there, we're, that part of it. Uh, before I ask the applicant now to sum up their, uh, their application, if anything else, I'm gonna give an opportunity to the interested parties and the, uh, authoritative representative to sum up. If there's anything else you want to say or add anything, obviously just a very brief sum up, please, if, if you want to do so.
Um, we do not object at businesses opening anywhere in the area. What we don't want is antisocial behaviour. And there's enough evidence from public health that antisocial behaviour in our area is increasing. And a licence till three or five in the morning is not going to help that. It can only make it worse, as the evidence has suggested.
Trust me, I'm on this with you.
Okay, uh, Councilor Homshoe, anything?
Yes, a couple of things. Um, so I'm currently working with business Sheffield, um, and businesses on Ecsel Road, uh, who are planning to set up a traders association. I think that will help the structure of the area and.
Sorry, we, we're not actually allowed to introduce any new evidence or submissions.
Sorry, it's not new evidence, it was response to the comment about Sheffield doesn't do it.
It's just summing up what's already been put up.
Okay, it was a response about the, uh, Sheffield doesn't do anything for businesses. Okay. Uh, yes, so, uh, so cumulative impact was mentioned and district impact zones. I thoroughly support the implementation of some cumulative impact assessment being done on Ecsel Road and other areas in Sheffield. As licensing officers, we know already, I, I have been pressing on this. So, uh, that would be great to see that happen. I'm glad my colleague on public health has brought that up. Um, and it's clear that everything is not fine in the area if we are having so many, uh, violent incidences, antisocial behaviour and forty-three sexual assaults, um, well, very recently.
Thank you, Councilor Homshoe. Anything else from public health?
Uh, just to say, um, this is not about being anti-business, it's about, uh, being anti the, the harm, um, that comes from alcohol being served at particular hours of the day. Appreciate really hardworking, clearly hardworking, business-oriented people that just want to succeed. But from a public health point of view, we need to balance that with, uh, local health wellbeing, impact on services. Um, and, uh, uh, and it is ultimately local economy in itself, people's health and wellbeing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, applicant, Mr Hiri now, if you want to sum up and say anything else you want to add.
I to- I totally agree with all of the comments, whatever these guys are saying, it's true. But we are on your side. We don't want, uh, the area to be loud. We don't want anti-behaviour socials in the area. We don't have none of those problems. If anyone and everyone do what they're supposed to do, that will help the, uh, the environment, the area. But if we don't do what we're supposed to do, then it will add into the area, it will have mess everywhere. But I do my bet in lounge four one eight, he's gonna do his bet in four one eight eats. But I don't know what's gonna happen to a spa, because they owned by someone else, someone else is managing. But I make sure I manage my staff, my property and my business, and he does the same thing, because we are always there. If we are not there, we see it on the phones, we can, we have access to our CCTV camera twenty-four seven. So we monitor everything. And we want the neighbours to be happy, we want the neighbours to come and thank us or be our customers. We want you to walk past, uh, Ecsel Road and come in and get, get a drink for yourself. But, um, that's it. We want peace, we don't want no problems.
Okay, uh, thanks everyone. Then that's the end of the presentations, questions and, and summing up. I'm now gonna ask the licensing officer to give us what options you've got available to us.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the options open to the committee are, one, to grant the premises licence in the terms requested, two, to grant the premises licence with conditions, and three, to reject the whole or part of the application.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, we're now gonna move into a private session, we're going to deliberate, have a discussion. Okay, thank you. So, uh, we're now gonna move into a private session. We're going to deliberate, have a discussion. Uh, I'm gonna ask yourselves and the licensing officer to leave the me, uh, meeting room. Uh, if you're gonna wait outside in the small room, you're welcome to do so. And when it comes to decision, we can call you back on the email. Thank you. Can you just turn the mic off, please? Uh, thanks again, everyone. Uh, as you can see, we've taken some time deliberating and discussing, uh, the, everything that we've, we've heard from the applicants, uh, and the interested parties. We have come to a decision. Uh, it's not been an easy decision for us because we have, as I say, uh, taken some time discussing it. We have agreed to allow, uh, opening up to three AM, uh, throughout the week from Monday to Sunday. So we, uh, decided not to allow the, up to five AM on Friday and Saturday, but up to three AM throughout the week.
So as the Chair said, that's, that's the decision. So every day during the week, opening nine AM until three AM. Given that you've objected and the variation application's been granted and because your application's been knocked back a bit, you've both got the right, well, you've all got the right of appeal against that decision. So following the hearing, Shimmer will send a notice out confirming everything that was discussed today, that final decision. And the final date for lodging appeals starts within twenty-one days of that decision, should you wish to do so. But if there are sort of any problems going forward, do get in touch with the licensing service. It's because the licence application's been granted, doesn't mean it's granted forever. So if there are problems that can be evidenced, you know, that are causing antisocial behaviour, crime, disorder, anything like that, it can be looked into and the licence can be, can be looked at and reviewed further. But hopefully that won't be the case, you know, that there won't be any issues in that you can operate successfully. But just to thank everyone for the time and the representations this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.